Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bow with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you that we could come together for our community, give us wisdom and discernment in the decisions we need to make tonight. We just pray for our first responders in our community, that you'll keep them safe and free from harm. Just thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve others. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 7th, 2022, Welsh County Council meeting. We have all council members present, so we have a quorum. First order of business is the minutes from our last meeting on May 4. If anyone have a chance to see those, and I'll entertain any corrections. If not, entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve in a second. Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Next is our transfers. I believe we just have one. Oh, it's appropriations transfer from Community Corrections. This is in project income. Two transfers from PPE and monitoring fees into training and seminars. Does anyone have a question? No votes here. Does any councilman have a question on the transfer? If not, entertain a motion to approve that transfer. No motion?
Second.
In second. Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're approved. You're welcome to stick around or...
She has the additional.
Oh, you have the additional, sorry. Okay. You will explain that additional for us, please?
I will. You should have received in your packet the bill for the purchase of the two Ford Explorers from the Sheriff's Department. We had budgeted $18,000 in our project income for the purchase of those two vehicles. Inflation kind of set up, and we are going to need an additional amount to purchase those two vehicles. The total purchase price I'm looking at is about $25,500.
For both, right?
For both, yes. Yes. And the cost to switch over the equipment, right now I do not have a bill for the cost of that. Emergency radio services are still working on transferring that equipment over to the vehicle, so I don't have a bill for that yet, so I have no idea how much that's going to be. But the additional cost to purchase the initial vehicles is what we're asking for.
Did we trade in something?
We traded in the 2010 Crown Victorias to purchase these, yes. And those were the two oldest vehicles that we had in our fleet.
So the net effect of that is 15 additional, is what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're asking?
Eighteen, yeah.
Well, plus the three on the equipment.
The three for the equipment, then.
Yeah.
That's all coming out project income.
Yes. That's all out of user fees.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions?
There's plenty of money in there, I was... Yes.
So I just need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for discussion. Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Sheriff Holliday.
Evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Sheriff. I handed out the monthly activity reports for May. Nothing out of the ordinary there, other than the number of inmates that have been booked into the jail is significantly up compared to this time last year. As of today, we have 89 inmates in jail. 29 of those are pretrial Superior, 21 are pretrial Circuit, 19 are F6, and five are DOC. I also handed out the monthly income generated for 2022 for the month of May. Shows all the year through May at this point, so again, nothing out of the ordinary that I've seen there. Only got two things here. One is just a construction update. It's in full force right now at the Sheriff's Office. I know a couple of you have come out and taken a peek around out there, but we are a packed house out there, especially with, we've got all kinds of, between the roof, interior walls on the new addition are going up this past week, so that's in full force. And they're continuing with the HVAC. They're mostly out of the front office now, with the exception of just a few things. They're back in our kitchen area, so where our kitchen is unusable right now, so we're making meals off-site and delivering them to the jail, working with a local church that's allowing us to use their facility, so that's been interesting. So hopefully that's no longer than three to four weeks, and then we'll be back in our kitchen and being able to use those services, so. Yeah, the roof is, luckily we've had pretty good weather, so they're looking at July to be done with the roof in that area, and that's, we've got another construction meeting next week. The only other thing I have is this time of year where we renew our contracts with schools. I presented at the, not yesterday's commissioners meeting, but the meeting before that, both Norwell and Northern Wells and Southern Wells are in the same cycle. This will be our fifth contract with Norwell and our third contract with Southern Wells, their two-year contracts with the option to renegotiate midterm on the contract for those. We've had a great working relationship with both schools. We've been in Northern Wells longer. As I said, this is where, we just finished up our fourth year at Southern Wells and our eighth year at Norwell. So I've met with both superintendents over the last several weeks. Typically, we go through our contracts to make sure nothing needs changed, but we also look at the financial impact of the cost of those being in the schools. And obviously, that's based on the SRO that's in the school. So I handed out the contracts. They're very similar to each other, to each of you. The total amounts are a little bit different, and that just has to do with the fact that one deputy has 15 years of employment and the other one has like seven or eight. So they're different in the pay scale, but we do factor in the total cost of the deputy itself, and then the school pays basically 70% of that cost of what's in there. So when we took this on eight years ago with Northern Wells, we added a deputy to the agency. We put it in our budget for the total cost of the deputy, but then the school reimburses us through 10 installments throughout the school year, which comes back to the general fund. So I don't necessarily, you guys approved the funding, it's already in my budget, I'm just as a blessing letting you guys know that it's been a great working relationship to have the deputies in the school, building those relationships with the students, doing threat assessments and those type of things within the school to help keep our schools safe. So I see no reason to, as the sheriff, to renew our contracts with them, just asking for your blessing for me. Necessarily, I'm to sign both of those. Both of these have been before their school boards and are approved. The copies you have are signed by their superintendents, so if I get the consensus and blessing that this relationship continues, which I recommend, I will sign these tomorrow and get those back to the school districts for the next two years.
Just curious, Scott, are we still using the officers in the off-season?
Yes.
So it's still that same arrangement?
So currently, both the SROs are back on the road right now.
In the off-season and then go back to the schools.
Yep, yep. So it goes quick, it's only 10 weeks, and then they're back in the, yeah, back in the schools for their pre-planning stuff, yeah.
If there's like Christmas vacation and things going on, spring breaks, do they, are they on road duty at those times? How's that work?
They can shoot, we encourage them to take time off when the school takes time off, which is nice for them. They don't argue about that, because typically they wouldn't get that work in the road necessarily. We encourage them to do that, but they also can take vacations when they're in the schools, so. But yeah, some delays and those type of things, or snow, you know, snow cancellations, those guys will come work the road if they don't have things that are going on in the schools during those days, so, yeah.
I know Sheriff, you and I have already spoke about, because I was at the Southern Wells board meeting. Obviously, big difference in the job descriptions from Norwell to Southern Wells from what there was previously. This, though agreement, looks like it spells out a pretty good job description within it. So would the ones that they've signed here, is that really more of a thorough job description versus the two different ones that are over here?
Yeah.
Or just for continuity purposes, to me, they should be the same because they're both?
We tried to keep, well, we started at Northern Wells with a contract, and we were with them for four years when Southern Wells chose to come on. So when we went to that school district, and of course, there was a different superintendent there then, when we started at Southern Wells. We blanketed Norwell's or Northern Wells, but with just a few minor tweaks.
Sure.
I found, and we had Dr. Scott Mills in Northern Wells for many years, so we had made minor changes over a lot of those years. And then we had, we've had two different superintendents in the four years that we've done Southern Wells. So we've had a little bit of change. We met with one of the school districts this year, because they were new to the system, and it was more or less, you know, in the end, they're our employee. You know, we don't contract with them, and then they get to do with, you know, the police, what they want to do. That's laid out in the contract. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made when it comes to the law, whether to arrest a juvenile through juvenile...
So you have ultimate authority over them?
Yeah, so we have ultimate authority over those. When we met, there was a lot of things, like maybe on a day-to-day basis, and to me, those were internal job descriptions. I felt like there's been a great relationship between us and schools, where they have come to us and said, hey, what do you think if our guy does this? Is that stepping outside of their bounds of what they're doing? So I feel like there's been some collaboration between the school districts to try to find that happy medium of what they want and...
And I know a turnover in administration makes that kind of hard, too, because you'll have another superintendent at some point coming up.
Yes, because now Southern Wells is leaving, so we'll be getting another new superintendent there as well. But again, this is approved through their school board.
But this one here is what, the documents we have here, really the description of what matters the most, as far as what they're doing.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
This is the meat, potatoes, the policy procedure, so to speak, of the day-in, day-out, but the minute little things, those things are kind of agreed on.
Worked through you.
Yeah. You may have one superintendent, want some direct traffic in the morning, and then another one does it because of the location.
Right, the nuances of the job.
Yep, exactly, so.
Well, I know the SROs, I've never heard anything but great for what they do, and I know it's a thankless job, a lot of times, like a lot of law enforcement jobs are, the man, as we can see, they're vital to these schools and the communities they're in.
Yeah.
You can't operate without them anymore.
In light of what's happened nationally.
Right.
I've been in this career for 20 years now, and I've lived both sides of it, to where cops in the schools, when I first started, was a big faux pas, where they didn't want us there, because it just, it showed that maybe something was wrong within the schools. And they kind of pushed us out the door and tried to deal with everything internally. And today, where we, I don't think they can picture not having...
Right. I don't think I want the liability of not having one.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't imagine what that would look like.
I think the community itself would probably not be in support of not having police officers in the school to build those relationships, to protect the children, to keep the facility secure and safe and those type of things. So it's good to see that. I've been a part of this, helping get this started to where we're at today.
I haven't heard but great things from the ones, obviously, with Southern Wells.
And it is, and it's hard with a smaller agency. You know, all three school districts in this community have school resource officers, and I think it's great, and they collaborate well, and I see this continuing long after I'm gone, so.
Well, I think that the school resource officer also, it was helped through federal grant, running through school safety schools, and so that really helped out. And then, once you have them, it's kind of like having electric windows on your car. You don't want to do without them, right?
You got to be committed to keeping them.
And they do do a wonderful job. I'm in school a lot, and that helps a lot.
Yeah, and it is, it is a specialized, you know, I didn't take this job to be a school resource officer, and I bet you, if you ask everybody that works at our agency, they didn't take this job to work in a school of kids. So we're fortunate to have two people in our department that have a passion for kids, that spend time doing the things that they do, because it's not for everybody. And so we're fortunate, definitely. So we, that's the important part of it, too, to continue this relationship and to keep those guys in a position that they're happy doing, because, yeah, this isn't, it isn't a job you make somebody do, they have to have a passion for it, and they're not going to be good at it, so.
Hopefully, in today's day and age, probably more people would say yes to that than maybe in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we're all highly supportive of it.
Absolutely.
I don't know that we have any vote to take.
Yeah, I don't think there is. I just wanted to let you guys know.
So you don't get a vote on that?
I'm in support of it, and I will be signing these contracts tomorrow, so, and getting those back to the school districts for the next two years, so.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chad, are you ready to go with Haven? It's probably a quicker conversation than Jackson, so, sorry.
We're going to do Chad and Haven first.
How an abundance of caution with Connor.
Well, I appreciate it, because my wife is a very...
I figured it.
In front of you, you should have the tax abatement compliance form for Haven. Add to additional, they actually had one that started in 2011, and it was our era, as we think about 10 years, 21, should have been the last year, but they didn't actually report on it first until 2012, so technically, this is the last year for theirs. And the, thanks to Kimmy at the assessor's office, who said, hey, they didn't, they didn't do this last one for the last year of it, and so we, Steve has that last paperwork for 2011. So they've made a lot of investment, as you can see, a lot of tax abatements that you see on paper. Part of the reason also why we try to do them a little bit quicker, so hopefully, we're not looking at, you know, 10 of these, we can start looking at two or three of them as they start to fall off, although Seth and Vicki were at their facility, and it sounds like they're going to be coming back here again soon. So their workload is continuing to increase. The new investments that they made, they were just here in February. They got to see those machines. One of them's actually working, the second one is not yet, as they're waiting for parts to get those up in operational supply chain, which you continue to hear is impacting that, but they could use that machine up in service a long time ago, so they're doing well, they're rebounding. They had obviously lost some work as the orthopedic surgeries stopped and during COVID, and stopped for a considerable, considerable amount of time. They continued to produce for a while, but then they just had to stop because the, their, where they were kind of having a lead time, which they were, the reason they had short lead times is because they were always overproducing, and they got to the point where they just had to stop. So some of those orders are coming back, new orders with new customers are resulting in an increase. They're still, they're short people, like everybody. They indicated six to 10 people, they'd like to have more, but some of that, what they've, they've had to do unfortunately, is invest in robotics, which is some of this, and they can have one person run four cells as the robots will grab the parts and put them in and keep things moving. But what those robots require is a higher level of skill and pay by those operators, because now they have to run both a robot and understand how to run a robot, as well as running the machine itself, so. As I, as each of, I think most of you have been in their facility, if you were to go there, as I go there, pretty often, it changes as he's trying to figure out where in that building he's going to put new machinery, because it's not very big, and he's done a great job of really moving things around and making the things fit within the confines of their space. Additionally, I know we mentioned at the last meeting, they were having some drainage issues, they found the drainage problem. The person who was supposed to be taking care of all of their drainage pipes and so on and so forth apparently didn't notice several blockages, and so once they got those blockages taken care of, the water actually is moving the way that it's supposed to, so. So they don't have as much a drainage issue as they did, now that they've been able to finally get it fixed, so. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them. So like you said, Seth and Vicki can certainly talk about the visit today, and would recommend approval of their CFPs.
You guys have any additional thoughts or...
No, I mean, I think, like Chad said, all of you have been out there at one point or another, but it's pretty amazing when you think about what products were made there for both the orthopedic industry, really going, you know, through Zimber Worldwide, and then also up into Michigan, with Stryker for the beds that they make and for ambulance as well. It was neat to go visit, it's been a while since I've been back there, I think a couple of years, so pretty impressive.
So we're not asking for anything new, we're just continuing what we had already approved, correct?
Correct. Just asking for compliance of their abatements.
With that, I'll take a motion to approve their compliance.
So moves.
No motion?
Second.
Have a second? Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Yeah, the Heartland 1-2, Chad.
I can certainly talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Heartland, again, it's their tax abatement for their fiber development. I, they're, I'm not seeing as many trucks as noticeable in the, they're currently building mostly the Uniondale substation, which is their largest substation in Welsh County. Are you hooked up now, Seth?
No, I haven't heard anything yet. I was going to see if you had any information there, but no. We're ready when they're ready.
Yes. I know that they, I think, as they started to kind of get online, they've now started to have a backlog with, you know, if you're some of the first ones, you kind of got things moved pretty quickly, but between when they dug the line to your house, to when they put the box on, to the guy coming in and actually installing.
It's a process.
It is a process.
Well, aren't you? How is it?
It's spectacular.
Compared to what we used to have?
Yeah, I'm on it, too.
I'm glad to hear, again, I'm not, because I'm not there yet.
They're plugging away, they're still going out there and investing. They did receive some grant money that hopefully will make the project happen a little bit quicker, because they can bring some more folks in to be able to hopefully get that built even quicker, so. They're definitely out there, they're building, they're running, I see their trucks running constantly all over the place, you see their splicers on the side of the road all over the place, and so I definitely would support the compliance of this tax abatement. And one of the things, if you guys remember, so they, their tax abatement was 100% for four years and then scales after, but that 100% of what they're getting is not on the full investment. And so by the time the full investment happens over a four-year period, by the time that fourth year hits, they're, when the full investment's out there, that's when they're going to get like 50% tax abatement, so they're getting 100% on some of the lowest investment pieces so far of the investment, so.
Okay. That was initiated in 2019, is it?
Sure, yeah.
Wow.
It does, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the compliance of the Heartland.
Sorry, babe?
Second? Move in second? Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
You get hooked up yet, Scott?
No.
Down 116.
That's the Heartland. I think it's the east.
Good? Great.
Oh, Connor, come on up.
Yeah, here I am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, update on the Highway Garage. This is probably our first non-update, because the first couple of estimates that we have done have lined up really nicely with when these meetings are. We do have the 95% set in hand, and we've gone out to subcontractors and other partners to kind of firm up the numbers that we've already presented to you guys, but they, they needed a little bit more time, and so did we to get through this set, because the set got a lot larger again, and there's a lot more detail included. We anticipate having all of the pricing in this Friday, and so I guess my big question today is, how would you guys like to handle that? Would you like me to present? I intend to come to the next meeting on July 5th, but that's going to be, you know, three weeks after we really have it, so is there a way that you would like to handle that as far as disseminating the information to you, or?
I would say, yeah, get it to us as quickly as you can, or whenever you receive it, if that's Friday or Monday. We'll circle internally and see how we would handle that.
So this Friday, there'll be firm numbers?
It'll be the firmest numbers we have to date. We aren't out to all of the different divisions.
No commitments to it, just...
Right. Yeah, we've essentially gone, like this time, we brought in, like Haybag and Ramsier have now, are reviewing the set, and they're going to provide some budget numbers so that we can verify what we've already presented to you as being fairly close. I think the way that, and I'd be happy to send out the document, it'll be very similar to the ones that we've seen the last two times, and Steve is just going to invite you to join us, as you have for the last couple, as we review it in depth.
Okay.
To provide you an opportunity to ask questions.
Could be next week, then?
Yes, and I plan, I'll get it on everyone's calendar tomorrow morning.
Okay.
It'll probably be Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm flexible on time for that.
Okay.
You got that?
When?
Wednesday.
Next week?
Yeah, okay. All right.
Morning? Eight o'clock? Nine o'clock?
I'll send it in. Do you guys have any questions this time?
Not right now.
No.
All right.
Thank you, Connor.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, any miscellaneous business from you? Counsel, do you have any miscellaneous business you'd like to bring up today?
You know?
I'll break up any comments that the audience would like to discuss at this point? If so, come to the, up front, yeah.
I could address the...
Sure.
This city is becoming all too familiar to me.
Just state your name, please.
My name's Mari Alleal, and I live on 450 East in Jefferson Township.
Okay.
I'm here today because we have been directed as a group of individuals from the Area Planning Commission to come and discuss with you the North Corridor Plan, as well as the 2035 Vision that includes the bypass around the town of Austin, and how that affects, how we feel, as it affects us personally as landowners in that area, how that's going to affect our farmland, the cutting up of our farmland, the, how that not only affects those that have their farmland cut up to access that, but how it also affects in the access of other folks within the agricultural industry that work in that northern part of the county. There are people from Southern Wells that farm, and Northern Wells, there's people that are west of where that bypass would be that would have to also cross that. So it doesn't just affect the people within that however-mild arcing point of that, but it affects many, many others. The other concern of ours is quite honestly, is the economic impact that it has on the direct town of businesses within Austin. Back in 2019, I believe it was, when the State Road 1 was actually closed down, there were businesses within Austin, just in that short period of time, that could not even make, that barely made payroll because of how that, the road, and people were not coming through the town. So we question quite honestly, we understand that Welsh County is the only county within a Lebanon County area that does not have a four-lane highway. And to us, we are quite concerned that this is more of a want and not a need. So we are asking for counsel to have us additional times within the agenda, allow us to have other discussions. We actually requested last night that possibly there is a subcommittee within members within the community itself, whether it's Austin Town businesses, people from the county council, the county commissioners, to actually sit down and have discussions and look at other alternatives other than to create this four-lane bypass that is going to take away natural resources that are becoming more and more scarce. We continue to put concrete over agricultural land that we can never replace. We truly are... We truly are the people who feed America and as we limit our resources, it becomes quite challenging. So we ask that we look at other alternatives, which we ask the Area Planning Commission to route on there because prior to that, there was only one opportunity for routing traffic to the northern part of the state or the northern part of the county, connecting it to, you know, whether it's, wasn't, there wasn't anything connecting to 469. It was just a loop around Austin. And so the Area Planning Commission stated that, oh yes, there's other options, there's other options. But yet, within that map, there was nothing defined. So it literally laid down in front of people who were looking at it, this was possibly the only alternative. So we are asking for us to really look at what some of those other alternatives are with maybe infrastructure that is already established that would take up less development within that infrastructure and have some conversations about that. So that's what we're here to talk about.
Okay, appreciate that.
Okay, so how do we actually become more a part of this agenda as opposed to miscellaneous conversation?
To get on the agenda?
Yes, for ongoing conversations.
Yeah.
To Lisa.
Lisa.
Okay.
The auditor just.
Yeah, she sits at her.
Because quite honestly, everybody's pointing this towards the county council as the driving force behind this plan. It's been, truly, I'm not making that up. And it's not just people in the community that it's hearsay. It's representatives from other boards that are truly directing us that this is the county council that is driving this. And so that's why we're here tonight to discuss matters with you. So I know you see perplexed faces.
Yeah, that's interesting. This is the first time it's come before.
Yeah, till I got, till I got emailed, till I got emailed on Wednesday, I didn't.
Yes, I mean, nobody wants to be thrown under the bus, especially with something that could be this impact, well, quite honestly. But we have to have discussions about this. This is gonna have major impact. Quite frankly, the way the map looks, it's gonna cut through people's homes. It's either gonna go right in front, right behind, or right through my home. I really don't want my 89-year-old mother to have to think about what is gonna happen to the future of her home. So my family's farm was not something that, we were not gracious enough to have it inherited to us. Both my mother and father had to work off of the farm, then come home to farm to purchase additional farm. So this is something that is so near and dear to my heart for my own parents' legacy that it's not something I'm willing to relinquish lightly or ever. So I just want you all to understand, this is not just about, oh, we're the only county in 11 counties that doesn't have a four-lane highway. We wanna understand if this is about residential growth or is this about industry growth? Because if it's industry growth, then we really need to think about if this is about Bluffton industry growth, all of the industry within Bluffton is on the west side. So how is this east-side loop around Austin gonna have a really beneficial impact to the west side of Bluffton or your industry? So we really wanna understand, what is the true demand? Is this about creating land that has now been zoned as residential agriculture into such a difficult, it's so difficult for us as farmers to get to that land that we just relinquish it and then thus it becomes residential area and we think, oh, we get to develop land and we get to develop all these housing and thus we have more development? Is that really what this is about or is this really about industry growth? Whereas someone said last night, I want my children to have a place where they can stay and work in Wells County. Okay, well, I guess I also challenge that thought process because I wanna make sure if that's the kind of jobs we're gonna put out in the industrial park, then it needs to be something that more than a $19 or $20 an hour job. So I, you know, I just wanna make sure that everything really makes sense. If it's about industry growth, then why are we going to the east side of Austin and not thinking about access quicker to 469? Because that loop doesn't even take you to 469. It just takes you to the north side of Austin. And then you gotta convince Allen County to be a part of this too. Allen County already said at one point in time, they did not have a desire or the NDOT did not have a desire to make access off of the Tewa Road. I know that. I lived it. Been there, done that. Watched farms cut up right and left. And I really just don't wanna see that happen again, so. So we'll be getting in contact with you and stuff. But I appreciate everybody's time and listening to us and I'll step away from the chair.
Well, before you go.
Before you, I got a real good question.
Sure.
Where did this come from? I guess.
And that was my, that was my question too.
I've been in here for a long, long time.
Well, like, when you say where.
Then the council was.
Yeah, then somebody said it was our decision.
I don't think we.
Well, if I can, please.
Yeah.
That study was commissioned through our county highway engineer, approved through the county commissioners with money invested into it as a north study, north corridor study.
And we also did a south corridor study prior to that study. So there's been two studies done and that's all.
So none of that is etched in stone? That is a scenario.
Brought up and what was in that study and what was in it. It was just, it was done because to get federal funding and things of that nature, you unfortunately have to jump to these groups.
And many of those have been done in the past that were not acted upon.
So.
City dozen, county dozen.
I appreciate that. So I believe the reason why we were directed in this manner is because the next phase of the 2035 Vision is going to come in front of you. That is what I think is in the process. They are working to, they are working to approve that vision. And before that, you know, that, once that vision is approved through the Area Planning Committee, that's gonna come in front of you. And so our concern, quite frankly, when it was coming in front of you, as the members of the committee were talking about, oh yeah, there's other options. There's other alternative routes. It doesn't have to be around, the loop doesn't have to be around Austin. It was interesting that that wasn't in writing on that plan. So if it came to you and you thought, oh, here's the, you know, here it is, right here in the, you know, the red or the yellow ink, you're going to assume this is the best route. This is the only route because that's what's on the plan. So we asked the committee, and which they graciously did do this, to look at alternatives. They, you know, looking at 124, looking at 116, looking at other avenues that possibly have connections to whether it's 69 or it is a connection to 469 within that map. So, and they did. And so I believe part of the reason why we were directed to come to you because of the 2035 Vision is it's gonna land in your hands next.
I think it goes to all the cities too. Everybody, I think, who I'm not mistaken, yeah, will travel to other government bodies also.
Don't take this wrong, Todd. I'll be there. I will be there.
And when you say land in, and when you say land in front of us, can you explain more what that means? Because we couldn't say, let's go build this and fund it because you're talking probably 30 to 50 million dollars.
I think it's like 300. I think it's 300, yeah. Am I correct?
So there are a lot of steps to go through before this body could do anything.
And Seth, truly, we know that.
Yeah.
But we also know that sometimes, once things take action, it's too late. And so we wanna be a part of that discussion. We wanna, as members of the community, we don't wanna all of a sudden hear about something and then it's too late and it's a done deal because there's grant dollars or there's state funding or there's federal funding that's a part of it. And that's why we're here, maybe, maybe you feel like we're here early, but I don't, I don't wanna be here too late either, so.
Yeah.
Did you say anything about the traffic flow?
There's been traffic studies that were recently done originally.
That's what we don't have before because we don't have the traffic going there.
And quite honestly, if you look and compare, and I, actually in my purse, I have some comparison numbers. I didn't bring them to the table. But if you look and compare, quite honestly, over the last couple of years, there has been maybe on 450 in certain sections, maybe 100 more cars over the last two years that's gone up. So it's not, it's not a significant percentage enough to increase it from my pers, in my opinion, you know? Now, the other piece to that is I understand there's been studies on cell phone travel and traffic from Bluffton to Fort Wayne. Well, I can tell you, I travel, I travel from Austin to the Lutheran Health Campus every day, sometimes seven days a week. Now, I have an iPhone. Yes, I'm sorry. This is your phone. I'm there. I'm there. Am I on iPhone? Yes. But I'm coming back to Wells County. I just work in, I work in, I work in Fort Wayne. I'm a nurse there, so I have to go. That's where I go to work every day, but I come back every day too.
Oh, believe me, we have those numbers also.
Yeah, so there's those kinds of traffic things. But truly, the first comment that was made last evening when I sat at the same table was, we're the only county in an 11-county area that doesn't have a four-lane highway. And from my, and from my perspective, if that's the best answer or the best rationale or the reason behind it, I don't know that it's a good enough one because my child could say, Mom, I'm the only one that doesn't have this. Well, I'm sorry, I wanna see the demand. I wanna see the true need for it and not a want for it. We wanna understand, is this really about industrial growth or is this about residential growth? If it's about industrial growth and it's about, part of it is about the growth of Bluffton, it doesn't make sense to put a corridor around the east side of Austin when it is very difficult to get to the west side of Bluffton if you're traveling from Highway 1. I mean, it's just, there's no easy route there. So that's, those are the questions that we have and.
Am I correct that the Area Planning Commission, July's meeting's gonna look at some new language into this? I read in the paper.
They are working on additional language.
But votes will possibly take place in August because again, they're the ones that set the plan and vote on the plan. Then it comes to all the government bodies.
That is correct.
Is that, is that the format?
I'm not sure what additional language they are going to be putting in.
Because when you were saying committee, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, the Area Planning Commission.
APC, is that the right?
Just make sure we're all.
So the APC, I do believe is gonna be putting some additional verbiage in there or some changing of some verbiage. They've already added the maps and the lines of 116, 124. So I do believe there's gonna be some additional verbiage that's gonna be added in there. And I think they're gonna have additional discussions at the July meeting. I believe that's part of the plan and hopefully have it to a vote and to you all in August. I feel like I'm the little secretary of the department, y'all.
Just wanted to clarify.
No, yeah, I'm having to report for you.
Area planning.
So, any other questions?
No.
Okay.
My, I'm retired now from my employees. I used to be in the price of the real. I don't, this bypass does help me to assess because I don't have to jump right back over State Road 1 again.
Well, I completely, I completely agree with you because apart from, this is why I'm very concerned about how this is going to affect Austin. Okay, I live on 450 East, so I know it's a mile and a half to get into Austin. So let's pretend we're driving from Bluffton around that loop. And I'm thinking to myself, do I need gas? Do I wanna drive a mile and a half and then mile and a half back? Or am I just gonna continue off the loop and hit where that gas station is at the corner of, what is it? The airport exit or, you know, where the, am I just gonna, because otherwise I gotta go in and I gotta go out. I'm just gonna keep going around. Same thing with the Port Crimson House, you know? I mean, everybody is hire lease. I mean, you just think about the foot traffic that gets lost of those businesses that are exposed to that day after day after day. The other evening, a couple that own, it's like a little florist shop, they started this, they barely survived COVID. They're now eating back on their feet. But they said 75% of their business comes from foot traffic, of cars that drive past their little flower shop and they say, you know what, I've driven by here so many times, I finally decided to stop. And I'm so glad I did. So those are the kinds of things and how this, and I'm telling, I'm telling their story and I wish they could tell their own story, but this is what they reported to the Area Planning Commission the other evening when we had an assembly of folks that were raising their concerns and voicing, making their voices known, so.
Mari, on the flip side of that, as a resident of Main Street for 38 years here in Bluffton, I would love to get the semis off of Main Street. And to do that, we need a route around.
Well.
And I know we're talking Bluffton, not Austin.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing that.
Flip side of that, there's benefits.
I appreciate you recognizing that. But again, what I'm gonna question and what I will challenge on is if this is truly about industrial growth of the west side, why are we putting the bypass solely around, it might be a five-mile stretch of that bypass that loops around the east side of Austin? We wanna, we wanna see about if there's a way to establish, if it's about truly that we can't get through Austin fast enough, then let's look at potentially rerouting traffic in Austin, meaning creating left turn lanes. There is enough, there is enough footage there. I know there is. We have, we have some pretty, we have some pretty sidewalks in Austin. I know. My mom's pie's probably paid for a lot of those sidewalks, if you know what I'm talking about. So pretty sidewalks compared to disrupting the livelihoods of individuals, of what their families have worked for, fought for. I mean, we literally have, you know, worked this soil and this land that it's not something that we really wanna relinquish lightly. We wanna understand the true reason for it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop anybody's growth. I don't wanna do that. Where I work, I'm the person that creates the vision and helps to inspire people to get to that vision. I get what creating a vision is and wanting growth. I just always wanna make sure that we are looking at what the best alternatives are for that. So looking at potential traffic patterns within Austin and maybe being creative with some of those things might even be more resourceful of our resources financially as well as natural resource-wise.
Understood, thank you very much.
No, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you bringing it to our attention and I can't promise that we're gonna have this kind of discussion every meeting.
No, I appreciate the fact, you know, honestly, this is not.
But there's a, there's a long way to go before any action is gonna be taken on that potential route change.
We really do appreciate the amount of time that we have been given because we often know, and I mean, truly, people always go, yeah, like three minutes at this mic and I know I've gotten more than three minutes. So I truly do appreciate your willingness to listen. The respect that you've all given us when people have come to the mic and we do really appreciate that. But we do wanna have ongoing conversations. We wanna be a part of the discussion as, as much as we can, so. I appreciate your time and.
Well, thank you.
No, thank you. So I'll step away and let somebody else talk.
Anybody else who would like to have a different discussion on any other topic?
My name's Mark Park and I've been following a lot of the APC 2035 Vision since last fall when I became aware of it. And I know there are many people that were not aware of it. And I said, well, is there a way to get more information out to people so that this communication can go on? And they said, well, we do what we, we are supposed to do according to all by putting it in the Bluffton paper. And that's all they're required to do to announce some meetings. And there's so many projects that they have planned in the 2035. I think more people need to be aware of what's going on. Because this is, and this is what she was probably talking about. I don't, you've seen that paper about proposals? It was stated, future Wells County Roads and Bridges Improvement Map. And I know there was a gentleman there that said at the APC meeting one night that said, why can't we make that potential or optional and decide other options instead of saying, saying future Wells County? Because that sounds rather definite. And I think they need to watch how they word things. I think they didn't change that wording. And I think it's true with some of the other projects in here. I don't think people are aware of the Pokobashi Trail. That's gonna be an 80-mile trail from, from the Walleye State Park up to Pocahontas. And that's gonna involve cutting across a lot of the county and it's gonna involve widening roads such as 100 East. And it'll be like a 40-foot from the center line to the west extension and a 70-foot to the east on that road. And then it'll have, I think, probably on up and then go through Austin, connect with the Fort Wayne Trails eventually. And I don't think people are aware of that, how it's gonna affect their properties and coming right up to their front doors. So I think people need to be aware of. Many people I talked to have not been aware of what is going on. So I said, isn't there a way that people that are affected get some mailing? Well, they said, well, we can't afford that, it's not in our budget. They said, you got, you need to, might as well go to the June meeting of the council because they could have approved more money for their budgets as far as mailings. Now, I don't know if that's the answer, but there needs to be maybe flyers made up so they can be posted in visible areas so people know what's, meetings are going on and what's on the agenda. So I think communication is a big thing for the community. And the other thing was the solar deal, solar farms that they're talking about and how much property that would take up as far as farmland. So that's been a big thing too. So I think I was addressed to bring it to this council because of the budget. So if there's any way you can decrease the budget to get communication going better, I would think that'd be the way to go. Because there are a lot of people here tonight didn't know about any of this until recently. And I think we need to get it out there sooner because this 2035 has been going on for quite a while. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
What if they were to put that in the Austin paper? Would that help?
Austin paper, anything. And there are, there are representatives on these boards in all the towns that need to get out there and get the information out. There's no reason why people sitting on the Area Planning Commission can't be out there talking about it to the community. And right here too, you have many people here, if you're aware of what's going on, talk to the community. We have to communicate.
I know all the public meetings are posted in the, in the news banner. And so it's up to the public to get to the meetings and pay attention to what's going on.
Right, and you know.
And because it's not going to be up to us to go out to every citizen that you might be referring to, to communicate. There's just an impossibility.
Well, except.
So you have to come to the meetings.
Exactly, they have to know the meetings and maybe what's on.
And they are posted. They're, the newspaper is represented right now. All the meetings are posted.
If you go to the website.
They're all on there.
Yeah.
So nobody should have an excuse not to know that there's a meeting going on and the agendas are posted at the meetings too. So if you see that on the agenda, come to the meetings and then you can be a participant in that meeting.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, encourage people.
Yeah, I'm encouraging you to come to the meetings right now.
Hey, this is the first one I've been to for a while, but I have been attending the APCs and the commissioners. So I'm watching everyone here.
That's, that's how to do it.
And I'm trying to.
And we're giving you a forum to speak.
Yes, and the people here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Did you have something?
Thank you.
Come to the front, please.
Hello? Hello? I don't know any of you guys. My name's Mindy Love. Spoke at the APC meeting.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that if we want to know what's going on, we have to subscribe to the paper. Was discussed at the APC meeting that most of the community no longer gets the paper. So while I understand it's our job to make sure we're aware of what's going on, isn't it your job to find a medium that most people use? Just a question that I want to, just something I want you guys to think about. I'm not.
Do you have internet service or a chance or?
We do, we have very bad internet service.
Well, I mean, even, being truthful, even a self, I mean, even a.
Yes.
We have a website, a county website that you can, you find all that information on different departments and different meetings. You know, just trying to be helpful to you if you're looking for that type of stuff, it's very accessible there.
I understand.
And the meetings are held on a regular basis.
Which I know now.
Yeah. So even if you didn't know what the agenda was for the meetings, the meetings are scheduled. Like we meet the first Tuesday of the month. Yep, and those meetings are posted outside this, this building down to the commissioners, same way. They're meeting every two weeks. Area plans on the schedule as well. So once you know their schedules, you could go to any meeting, settle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing done, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved?
All second.
Second? Hall and眾?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.